Talk about being civil. I think this is a prime opportunity for us to model that. On February 22nd, the Maryland State Department of Education voted to rescind its emergency order on requiring face masks and returning masking requirements to local control, pending approval of the Maryland General Assembly's Administrative, Executive, and Legislative Review Committee. On February 25th, shortly thereafter, the Maryland General Assembly's Administrative, Executive, and Legislative Review Committee voted to rescind the mask mandate within the state, therefore providing implications for all local jurisdictions to consider. With that said, as a result, today we are bringing forward a resolution to transition to a mask optional policy to all MCPS school buildings, facilities, and on all MCPS provided transportation. I want to state again the importance of everyone in our community, our students, our staff, our parents, and others respecting the decision of others, and we will be launching a campaign to promote respect for each other's decision. And I think it's necessary to think about when and why we launch a campaign, but this is one that will be necessary for us to make sure that every staff member in all of our facilities and every student feels that their opinion and their choice, no matter what it is, is to be respected. And the more we can all say that, the more we can all emphasize it and model it in our interactions is important, and that's the purpose of the campaign. We're also going to continue to closely monitor COVID-19 data in collaboration with the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, as we have always done, and we'll revisit the issue of mask in MCPS facilities and transportation if needed in the future. If we've learned nothing else from COVID-19, we know that we can't always predict the future, but we do want to react to the information we have right now, the circumstances we have right now, and the data that we have right now. And so with that being said, I do want us to think about, yes, the resolution that I'm about to read is about where we are right now in Montgomery County Public Schools, but we always have to think about following all of the information that occurs and be flexible in the future if needed. So with that, Ms. Wolf, I'd like to read the resolution that we're bringing forward on optional masking in school buildings, facilities, and on transportation provided by Montgomery County Public Schools. Whereas the Maryland State Board of Education promulgated a regulation codified at Code of Maryland Regulations 13A.01.07 concerning mandatory face coverings in school facilities for students and staff in Maryland public schools for school year 21 and 22. On February 22nd, the Maryland State Board of Education voted 12 to 2 to rescind the mask mandate by March 1st, 2022, pending approval from the Maryland General Assembly's Administrative, Executive, and Legislative Review Committee. The Maryland General Assembly's Administrative, Executive, and Legislative Review Committee voted 17 to 1 to rescind the mask mandate and uphold the previous recommendations by the Maryland State Board of Education. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention released an updated framework on February 25th, 2022, creating COVID-19 community levels that account for severity of disease and the capacity of the healthcare system to respond. Based on the new CDC and prevention framework, the community level in Montgomery County, Maryland is designated as low, and masking guidelines for schools and early care settings now follow the same guidelines for the community in which they are located. Effective February 25th, 2022, the CDC and prevention no longer requires that people wear masks on buses or vans, operate by public or private systems, including early care and education care programs. Montgomery County Public Schools respects that each individual may choose whether or not to wear a mask when masks are optional in all school buildings, facilities, and on Montgomery County Public Schools transportation. Montgomery County Public Schools is continuing to closely monitor COVID-19 data from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention in collaboration with the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, and revisit the issue of masks in Montgomery County Public Schools buildings, facilities, and on Montgomery County Public Schools transportation if needed based on community level data. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Montgomery County will no longer require universal masking in Montgomery County Public Schools, our buildings and facilities, and on Montgomery County Public Schools transportation effective immediately, and that wearing masks in Montgomery County Public School buildings and facilities on Montgomery County Public Schools transportation will become optional unless required in accordance with quarantine and isolation guidelines.
Okay, before we vote, this board would like to remind our community that the decision to wear or remove masks is an individual and very personal one. We respect the decisions of our families, our students, our teachers, and administrators, and we ask that our community demonstrate that same respect. This board and our administration will not tolerate any bullying or harassment of our community members who choose to continue wearing masks. Our teachers in particular have been heroic throughout this pandemic, and those who choose to remain masked deserve our respect and protection. We encourage our students and staff who receive any harassment, bullying, or intimidation regarding this issue to please report it immediately in accordance with our policy so that it can be investigated and consequences may be imposed. We are hopeful that our community will treat one another with kindness, understanding, and civility for the personal decisions we make regarding masking.
Like move approval? Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
I have a comment, but I don't.
Wait, you can make comments. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Ms. Mandrowski?
Yeah, thank you. I just, as I had said, you know, when we talked about this last time, there's nothing that, as is so many different aspects of this COVID situation, there's nothing that's going to make everybody happy. But I relate to Ms. Wolf's points and to Dr. McKnight's, what she spoke to, you know, I really certainly hope that everyone will be kind and respectful and supportive of each other. I've taken, we've heard from hundreds and hundreds of people on this issue. I've taken all of the comments and positions into consideration, and I recognize and I appreciate that for a lot of people this will seem like a big step, but unless you're only going to school and staying home, we've kind of already taken that step, so I'm hopeful that it'll be a nice, easy, smooth transition for not just our students, but our staff, and that I do hope that people will report incidences that are unbecoming of MCPS and this community. Thank you for your support on this initiative.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, thank you. And just a couple of things that I wanted to reiterate, and I very much appreciate, Ms. Wolf, the statement that you made, because, you know, our student member of the board, Ms. Looney's not with us, and she spoke about this issue at our last board meeting on February 24th, and we all know what was unleashed on her after that, but, you know, nobody that commented could say that they had the same level of knowledge and engagement with our students as she does, because she is out in schools all the time, engaging with students in person over social media. She has her finger on the pulse. And so we know that a lot of our students are anxious. We know from our emails that a lot of our staff are anxious, and so I, and nobody, everybody's circumstances are different, and nobody should have to explain them. Everybody's tolerance for risk varies. Nobody should have to explain theirs. And so one of the things that I hope, as we're sending out messaging to make sure that nobody is bullied for their choice, and everybody's supported in making the choice that's right for them and their circumstances, that we could also empower people with some tools that might help to assuage some of their anxieties, and just as we've been doing, making sure people are aware of opportunities to get vaccinated and boosted. We know a lot of our young students are getting to that point in time where they will need a booster, making sure they have that resource available to them, encouraging more and more people to opt into our screening testing. It's another way to feel a little more confident if you're getting that routine testing. And then also making sure that we are just continuously communicating with our community. There's a lot of anxiety we've heard, please don't do anything until after spring break. I take some, you know, I look at the data a lot. I take some reassurance in the fact that we're two, more than two weeks out now since our county mandate ended, and we've seen our cases drop steadily. They're down 40% from where they were when the mask mandate was, went away. And so I'm hopeful that that's a trend we'll continue to see even when we get towards spring break. But if that trend reverses, we will be prepared to act and provide people some reassurance that after that 10 days away, we aren't going to see a spike in cases again, especially when we know that we have people who are truly anxious because of the circumstances of them, the people that they love, and the people that they live with. So anyway, thank you.
Ms. Silvestri?
Yeah, just a brief comment. I think that this is also an opportunity to continue to fine-tune our other mitigation efforts, because that's only going to prepare us for the next wave or the next variant. And so we, I just want to send the message that those will continue to be in full force and even, you know, improving every day. And I also hope that we are, provide some flexibility around our virtual academy for some families that choose to pursue that option for their family. So thank you.
Ms. Mandrowski?
I did actually, I meant to mention something about that, and I did actually want to just ask you. I know that we had done a little, for a short time, we did have some virtual options for people who were in quarantine. Is that something that we had any conversations about maybe bringing back for a short time while people adjust, or how would somebody who doesn't feel comfortable at this point going back, how are we going to advise them?
Right, so thank you for that question. When we made the adjustments a couple months ago in terms of providing that option, it was around, quite frankly, the case rates. That's when we were in Omicron, there was lots of spread, and we wanted to be able to provide the option that was helpful to stopping the spread of Omicron, as well as to be able to address how people were feeling. The data doesn't say that right now. We do have the virtual academy, the natural process in which each quarter, you know, a student's exit and move and others are able to come in. So of course we'll take that into consideration as we continue to monitor the priority of that. So, and of course I just want to say if families are struggling with feeling comfortable around what we are doing, I ask them to connect with their school buildings, but I also want to remind everybody, I think it was our board meeting before last where we talked about how based on all the things that we've learned over the past couple years, we've put in additional mitigation strategy to address some of the concern that may exist. I mean, masking is one, but we've talked about that's why we're sending home the rapid test kits before spring break. That's not something that we did before, and we're asking people to upload that so that we know if travel is happening, what our circumstance is going to be in response to that. We're also, we've continued to increase the random testing. We bought on another vendor, and so that's still in place for us to be able to continue to do the random testing for students in the building. So those are the strategies that I will call out, that I really want to emphasize to our families, we are continuing those so that they feel comfortable with students coming in for in-person learning and engaging. And we've done that purposely based on all of the information that we've learned from COVID-19 over the past year. So.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there, Ms. Harris?
Yeah, Ms. Silvestri reminded me of something when she mentioned mitigation measures that we've been using, and I would just ask that we would also really double down on our messaging to all of our schools around outdoors. We're getting into spring, all the concerns about, well, the weather, and frankly, I think our students are heartier than that. They probably could have been outside anyway, but getting students outside to eat, play, and learn. And as an example, I would just mention that any impediments that an administration might see to allowing students that flexibility before that opportunity is just shut down, if they would partner with their students to try to problem solve. Because I was at, I was at one of our middle schools the other day, meeting with students, and there was an announcement before the lunch period started, and it was to take away the ability of students to eat in one of their outdoor locations, saying from now on, students must all go to the lunchroom. And if the weather was not bad, there would be a little limited opportunity for them to go outside into a parking area to eat. But, you know, it was clear that the students were, the rationale wasn't explained, and it was clear from the students that this was coming at them out of the blue. And to me, I thought, well, it wouldn't have been better if there were issues and problems that the administration had identified to have that conversation with the students and let the students help them collectively problem solve ways that could have addressed the concerns and still allow the students to take advantage of that outdoor opportunity. So just if we could encourage more outside the box thinking around how we can use those outdoor spaces at all of our schools, realizing that they were a great, you know, risk reduction technique during an airborne pandemic, but they're good for the social, emotional, and physical well-being of all of us anyway.
Ms. Harris, what I've found in those particular circumstances is sometimes there's a breakdown of communication of the why. I mean, every time we bring those examples forward and there's a perspective, what we find in that is there's somehow a missing conversation between there being some sharing of ideas and understanding around why one party may think this isn't possible and why another party does. So I continue to elevate that that's important for our school leadership to really engage in that, because we talked about the premise of reestablishing trust. This is what it is. It's communication. And so, you know, we're going to be doing that at Central and continuing that discussion. And to your point about outdoor options for classrooms and eating, if anybody had a chance to walk outside this weekend on Saturday and Sunday, it just reminded us of, and it reminded us of why the outdoor space in some ways is just so freeing, especially coming out of a winter season during COVID-19 for the second time around. It's important. And so we've invested, and we fiscally invested in things for our schools to be able to utilize some of the outdoor areas this past year. So we don't want that investment to go to waste, and we are expecting that there was a newfound opportunity within our schools to be able to continue that. And this is us building on that innovation of all the lessons we learned from COVID-19 that we want to still be a part of our regular practice, and that is one. So I elevate that, and thank you for raising that, because it's not that we expect for all of that to go away as a result of us being able to remove the mask. One other piece I meant to mention earlier is, and we're still going to provide the KN95 mask to our students and staff in our buildings as we did for those who felt, who feel moving forward that that's something that they need to continue to do. So I did want to acknowledge that again, we have to model that either way it's going to be fine for everyone to make the choice and the decision, and we don't want it to be a hardship for any of our students and staff if that is their choice. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Sure. So thank you, Dr. McKnight, for addressing all the things that we're going to still continue to do. I just want to ask a question in regards to school administrators and even staff in the building. You know, the hope is that we all continue when we go out in public and when we're in closed spaces, that we continue to do things that will keep everyone safe. But being that we will have some people possibly not mask and some continuing to wear masks, do we anticipate that there will be some additional burdens on staff that we may not have? You know, in the beginning, we hadn't anticipated what it would look like for staff to do contact tracing, right? So do we anticipate that in the event that we hear a student has tested positive for COVID-19 in the school building, some additional work that staff will have to do?
Oh, thank you for raising that, Ms. Evans. That's a great question. So one of the reasons we went to county council, I think back in February, was to say we needed to release the staff from that responsibility to get back to teaching and learning, and we remain strong on that request. And I'm thankful because the county did step in and say that we will take care of this. And that's how we're going to get back to that mitigating learning disruption conversation that we just had earlier, because now the staff can actually have the time and spend their energy focusing on addressing that in the classrooms and building the relationships with our students to really focus on their continued well-being. So thank you for that. And as another part of what we will continue to do moving forward is, I mean, in many ways, we have learned the benefits of providing some virtual flexibility. So, you know, that doesn't go away either, thinking about what makes people feel comfortable and in the appropriate context of how we provide, it may be programming and events and things like that. If we're going to reach more broadly our community, we've found that, you know, there's value in when and how we do that when it's appropriate. So that's also a part of what we'll do moving forward. In terms of what you were saying, I think that provides flexibility for staff as well as the community to engage in a way that they had not before.
Perfect. No, I think it's important to reiterate that, because not everybody knows that. I know that people have all type of anxieties about what could or could happen during this time, and we just want people to know that we try to be thoughtful and engage all of our partners in this conversation to talk about what it could look like for everyone, the adults and the students while they're in the buildings during this time. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're up to item number 10. I'm going to ask Ms. Mandrowski if she wants to get started.
Thank you. So for item 10, we're reviewing the policy JHF today in response to state law and a directive from the State Board of Education. For a little background, in 2009, the State Board of Education developed a model policy prohibiting bullying, harassment, and intimidation. Thank you. Do I have to start all over again? Great. I am pretty loud, according to my husband, so.
And you can take your pants off.
It's effective immediately?
Yes.
Nice. In 2009, the State Board of Education developed a model policy prohibiting bullying, harassment, and intimidation at the direction of the Maryland General Assembly. The law also requires that the policy be updated regularly and that each local school system revise their policies and submit it to the state superintendent for approval. The Policy Management Committee reviewed proposed technical revisions that would be made in order to bring it into alignment with the State Board of Education's model policy and pursuant to policy BFA policy setting. The Policy Management Committee is recommending that the board immediately adopt the technical amendments without tentative amendment or public comment, period, because these proposed amendments are needed to comply with state law and have been pre-approved by the state for compliance. So with that, I will turn it over to staff and allow you to kind of walk us through all of the changes and technical amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mandrowski. Joining us at the table now are Mr. Edmondson from the Student Welfare and Compliance Unit and Dr. Grant from OTLS Curriculum and Instructional Programs. As you mentioned, we are here today to explain the MSDE actions initiating this revision and to talk more about implementation strategies as they will be impacted by these revisions. I'd first like to set the context and review what took place prior to this meeting. Maryland law requires the Maryland State Department of Education to update its model policy on bullying every five years and required Maryland public schools to update their bullying policies by January 1. This was previously done in 2016, and MSDE published its updated model policy for 2021 in December and requested an extension allowing local school districts to update their policies and submit them to the state superintendent by February 15. After receiving comments about the timeline from all Maryland public school districts, MSDE revised this deadline to allow school districts to provide a draft policy to MSDE by February 15 and a final policy by March 31. MCPS has complied with this requirement and sent the draft before you to MSDE on February 15 as required. In a conversation with MSDE that we chaired during our last meeting, staff received positive feedback on the draft as having met criteria for key components. You will recall that policy BFA on policy setting section three addresses the process the board may follow in cases such as this, where the board is making amendments that are required to comply with federal, state, and local law. And before we go over these technical amendments, Mr. Edmondson and Dr. Grant would like to answer the question, what do these amendments mean for implementation? Can we go to the next slide, please? Mr. Edmondson?
Good afternoon, Dr. McKnight, President Wolf, and the board. Thank you for having us here today. I would like to answer that question. I will also share with you some of the language that is detailed in the state's policy model for us and the changes that we will make in our draft for JHF. Next slide, please. So before we get into some of the actual changes to the language, I do want to just review some related actions that the district has taken with regards to bullying, harassment, and intimidation over the past several months. So we recently, last June, we revised board of education policies, as you are well aware, including language of sexual misconduct and with our previously sexual harassment policy on ACF. We also recently added hate bias protocol language into our policy ACA, which is nondiscrimination, equity, and cultural proficiency. Those are two important steps to make sure we have the language right in our policies and into our regulations. We also updated reporting mechanisms, so we included recently an online version of our bullying and harassment reporting form. We've expanded our web presence, our handbooks, and our guidelines, and our quick reference guides for our staff and our teachers and our counselors and administration. We've enhanced training on recognizing and reporting, not only for our staff, our administrators, and our counselors, but we've also included that training for our students, and we are just, as of March 1st, implementing the 2.0 version of Culture of Respect Student Module for all of our sixth through 12th graders, that they are in the process of taking that 30-minute module now, which focuses specifically on that recognizing and knowing how to report incidents of bullying and hate bias and sexual misconduct and issues of gender identity and any of the discrimination and characteristic identification from that policy ACA, which is where we pulled most of our work from. We also streamlined our resources for our students, and so making sure that the Safe Schools of Maryland app was available for our students because of the enhancements made to that app and how it, once a student goes on and finds resources from that app, they can report through that app, which is now on all of our schools' websites. And then the information goes not only to security within MCPS, but also to the principal to be able to follow up with it immediately. We've developed a document that all of our schools have called Ways to Report in multiple languages as well, and making sure that students are aware of the multiple ways in which they can report, either anonymously or through service entities, to make sure that they are supported emotionally through incidents that may occur. We developed this past fall, ahead of what I'm going to share with you in just a minute, an official MCPS supportive measures plan with regards to those resources to make sure that we are ensuring any of our complainants and our respondents, our alleged victims and our alleged offenders, have a safety plan, less technical term, but a safety plan in place from our schools to be able to implement and move forward. And we've continued our external partnerships, specifically with our state's attorney's office and with Choose Respect. As I know, I'll take a second for the announcement that Choose Respect Week is coming up, March 21st, which is a very aligned and very important part of this process. We're very excited about that work. Next slide, please. Sorry, next, there you go. So just visually, the dark text is the current or previously, previous language around this work, and then in red are the changes from the state model policy. And as you can just see, and I don't want to read for you or for the audience, but as you can see, really just specifying much more detail and explicitly what we mean when we say this is the definition of bullying. And so not only is it unwanted, not only is it a pattern of behavior of repeated use of power, but it's demeaning. There's a perceived power imbalance, which is a key addition to the changes, not only from a physical standpoint, but also an emotional and academic power of control. And then there's a repetitive repetition aspect of the new definitions, not necessarily when you dig into a little bit deeper, because there's a question of, you know, can bullying happen on one incident? It can if you think that it's very likely to be repeated again between that, between that complainant and that respondent. But just making sure, as we're just looking at this, there's just a much more explicit definition for these. If you go to the next slide. Again, with cyberbullying as well, not only just the use of electronics in order to harm or harass, but it really breaks down into cell phones, computers, tablets. or harass, but it really breaks down into cell phones, computers, tablets, multiple formats of social media, any type of gaming. It also talks about whether it's, whether there's sending of harmful information or photos, any type of personal or private information where someone has not given consent to share. So it just gets into the, again, the explicit work behind the definitions. At this stage, if you want to change the slide, please, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Grant, who's going to share with us some of the comprehensive health pieces that we're working on with this new policy changes.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. I always get so excited to be here because it gives me time to share the work being done in Office of Teaching Learning in Schools and what we're doing in curriculum to really support and uplift our children and the whole child. So thank you for that opportunity. Specifically today, what we're talking about is the drilling down of bullying, harassment, and intimidation and how that goes into health education. BWL 365 is a Tier 1. All students receive health education and physical education, every single student, diploma-bound, non-diploma-bound, are receiving health education and physical education, elementary, middle, and high school. So it's a great opportunity for us to reach students in a preventive manner for various topics, including this one, bullying, harassment, intimidation. Well, how did that come about, really? Well, the state mandates that we have K-12 health and physical education, and COOMAR mandates specifically outlines safety and injury prevention and mental and emotional health units be taught across the grade level bands. As a result, the Maryland State Department of Education developed a curriculum framework which includes these topics around bullying, harassment, intimidation that we successfully implement in our curriculum documents here in Montgomery County Public Schools. I also wanted to highlight that all of this work is done from a national perspective with the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention Health Education Curriculum Analysis Tool that shows the evidence base and the vetting being done and age appropriateness for these topics as well. Some examples you may see in the curriculum, for example, is in Grade 1, the characteristics of what is a bully. What's the difference between tattling and telling, right? And then how do I find an adult and keep finding an adult to keep telling if something is happening to me or my friend or my classmate, right? In Grade 5, an example is intimidating behaviors. What are intimidating behaviors? How do I tell and identify those trusted adults in the building to get help and seek help? In middle school, media, technology, and harassment are looked at analyzing influences. So the graphic here has the health literacy skills, and that's really what our goal is, is that we're taking time in health education to empower our students with practicing communication, setting goals, advocacy, self-management, decision-making, because we don't know what battle they're going to have to face, what issue they're going to have to face. And so for today, bullying, harassment, intimidation is one that we're focusing in on. High school, it gets more into social media and self-management. So these are just some of the highlights. But I really just wanted to emphasize that at all levels, elementary, middle, and high in our non-diploma-bound students, identifying bullying, harassment, and intimidation is a focal point, finding ways to prevent it, whether that's me learning interpersonal communication skills so I do not bully somebody else and not realize that my behaviors are bullying behaviors, or whether it's me identifying that I am being bullied because I know that those communication skills a student is doing to me are not appropriate. And then, of course, practicing, like I said, those interpersonal communication skills, self-management, to advocate for self or others, so that you're being an upstander and not a negative bystander. So through this reporting and knowing how to report, our prioritized work in the curriculum, and that's done in collaboration across office, across with school psychologists, school counselors, the team you see to my right, all of us really work across the district and across offices to make sure this happens, and it gets to our students in multiple and varied ways. So I want to thank you for our time with this one moment with the comprehensive health education, speaking to bullying, harassment, and intimidation, and how it is embedded in BWL 365 as a Tier 1, all-students-access preventative strategy. Thank you.
Could you go to the next slide, please? So not only in the language that we're going to share in the draft JHF policy, but also we have reporting forms. 230-35 is the reporting form within the district. Through 230-36 is the investigation form. And so just, again, more detail and explicit data and information has been included on these reporting forms. For example, not just where and when, but was it, did it involve a digital device? Was it virtual learning? Specific locations have been added to that form, not just on campus or off campus, but where in the school. And that data is important when a school is doing an analysis of when these things are occurring and what supports might need to be implemented moving forward. It also provides options for reporting if the respondent, again, layman's terms is the alleged offender, has an IEP or not, and that's the information that we had not had on the reporting form in the past. The next slide shows some updates to the investigation form with more specifics with the process of not only were interviews conducted, but more details about who was interviewed and what evidence or documentation was collected. Again, the IEP information for not only the complainant, but the respondent, and then more detail with regards to outcomes, like here's what we learned and here's what's happening as a result. And then the next slide is just, as I mentioned earlier, the new model policy specifically outlines a supportive measures plan, a safety plan, and we were ahead of the curve as last summer officially developing our own safety plan and making sure our schools and our counselors are using that for each and every situation that we have. Interventions conducted, restorative approaches to these incidents, which, again, was not part of the policy in the past, and we want to make sure it's a part of that. I'll turn it back over to General Counsel for next steps, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Edmondson, Dr. Grant. Ms. Davis will now walk you through some of the changes we've made to comply with the MSD model policy.
Thank you and good afternoon. So I would like to highlight five major themes in the revisions, updated definitions, professional learning, prevention and education, timelines for communicating with parent guardians, and interventions and supports. So what you see on pages 2 through 4 are updated definitions, and I want to clarify that there are two things operating simultaneously. There is state law, which remains, and it was the basis of our former policy. The second component is the model policy. So the state law is more of the where and how much language. That has not changed. We have left it on pages 2 through 4. We did update a little bit, and this was acceptable to MSD, the language that we in MCPS use in our policies and regulations to define property. That's what you see here. So that continues over to page 4. Now, on pages 4 through 7, the model definitions are more descriptive. So what you'll see, for example, about bullying at the bottom of page 4 is a more descriptive definition. Bullying is unwanted, demeaning behavior among students that meets the criteria for prohibited conduct, which is how we set apart the state law portion on pages 2 through 4. That's the where and how much criteria. So it meets the criteria for prohibited conduct and includes these other dimensions, which Mr. Edmondson outlined, the imbalance of power and the repetition. Cyberbullying, a much fuller definition of cyberbullying. It is bullying that meets the criteria for prohibited conduct and, and then, you know, I'm not going to read that all to you, but transmitted by means of a portable communication device, et cetera. Moving over to page 6. Oh, I will highlight at the top of page 6, more language about cyberbullying, may be subject to disciplinary action when there's a connection back to the school setting. It creates a risk of harm to other students while they're at school or interferes with the educational environment, regardless of whether the instructional environment is in person or virtual. Okay, down to harassment at the bottom of page 6. Again, a little more descriptive definition in the model policy, means actual or perceived negative actions, again, meets the criteria for prohibited conduct and offends ridicules, demeans another individual with regard to actual or perceived personal characteristics. And then the fuller list is in Policy ACA. Or, sexual in nature is set forth in Policy ACF. And then the fourth dimension of intimidation, communication or action that meets the criteria for prohibited action and threatens or induces a sense of fear and/or inferiority. Retaliation may be considered a form of intimidation. And then we already had this language that we prohibit reprisal or retaliation against individuals who report. Okay, so the second theme is professional learning. There was a lot in the model policy about professional learning. We already had a lot of it, so we've just made a few updates. Bottom of page 8, professional learning for staff, educational opportunities for students, and then we're working on the volunteer component. Again, let's see, professional learning. Stressing at bottom of page 9, increasing the understanding and awareness of the importance of adult visibility. And then as part of committee-requested updates, we added the language about in spaces such as locker rooms. Multi-tiered, I'm stopping the top of 10, multi-tiered restorative approaches to improve school climate, safe, supportive, culturally responsive school and classroom practices. And then at bottom of page 10, I'll just highlight identifying and providing supportive measures to students who may be vulnerable to bullying. That's a little different and new, harassment and intimidation. Okay. The education language, as Dr. Grant has outlined on page 11, we had it in practice, we're highlighting it in policy, providing school-wide educational programs at all grade levels. And then what's a little bit new, and I think we already do it with 365, but again, we're highlighting it in policies and we can fuller, more fully build it out, providing opportunities for parents, guardians, volunteers to develop an awareness of the significance of bullying, harassment, and intimidation and its potential as a public health hazard. Okay. Now I want to flip over to page 14. There's some updated language on notification. Just to highlight where we are going above and beyond the state request, the state told us, yes, at the request of committee, the state said we had to have three days within a report to notify parents and five days, parents of alleged victims, five days to report to the parents and guardians of alleged offenders. What we have suggested here in consultation with committee is that principal designee will contact the parent guardian of all students identified in the report within 48 hours of receiving the report, unless the principal designee is otherwise directed by law enforcement. Okay. Over to page 15 to 17, a little bit more about interventions and supports. Mr. Edmondson has highlighted the more structured format that outlines the supportive measures. Just want to highlight at the bottom of 15, develop a continuum of culturally responsive social emotional supports for both complainants and respondents, which utilizes a trauma-informed and restorative approach. These may include supportive measures to potentially vulnerable students and students exhibiting bullying, harassment, intimidation behaviors, as well as individualized intensive supports for complainants and respondents. I will highlight the purpose on line 439, to reduce the possibility of further episodes of bullying and otherwise increase the student's sense of safety. And with that, we are ready for your questions and discussion.
I just, before I take questions from the colleagues or they want to ask you, but I'd want to thank you for the incredible amount of work that you all did with this, for making the amendments. I really appreciate the verbiage that you used in addressing some of the issues, like the more expedited timeline for contacting parents. I had one question, well, do parents get a, you know, but as we talked about at committee, you know, all of this stuff and so many of these type of policies, it's all about the implementation, you know? So ensuring reporting and making sure that we're monitoring schools, you know, being, doing the reporting and all of that, the Choose Respect program that you mentioned, making sure that people, that the staff and teachers are aware that it's out there even and that it's an option for them. And then my question was about whether or not parents get copies if a bullying form is put in, submitted. Does a parent, do parents get a copy of the form for their records, or is it just something for school?
So thank you for the question. So parents do not get an actual copy of the report if there's confidential information on that report of another student, more, in addition to their own. But they will get a letter that will provide all of that information that they would have access to in that letter to the family.
Okay. I think I understand that.
So again, it's no secrets, but if there's confidential information like IDs and names that they shouldn't be aware of, then they would not get a copy of the report.
Right, okay. But so it would be deducted or something. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you very much for the work and the description and all the words that you used to describe the behaviors and who's getting it, but I think the most important part is what happens afterwards and how do we work with the students that have been doing the bullying, have been standing around watching the bullying, and the victim? And how do we work with the parents? And I think that the more encouragement we can give to our teachers not to say, and I've told you this before, just don't listen to it, ignore it, and this is very hurtful and doesn't help the student at all. And I think the forms are nice, but I think it's much more important to be able to work with the people that are involved with this.
If I could just comment on that, because that was something we did talk about, and I think it's really important that we mentioned and we haven't, that this is technical updates, but there's the adaptive part of this work, and it's really important. And in our trainings, not only with administrators and counselors and people personnel workers and school psychologists, all of the, all of the key players in these situations, that's threaded through all of our training, is the adaptive part of this, is making sure that, yes, we've done the supportive plan, and yes, we follow up with the letters, but we're not done with it. So there's, should be follow-up meetings every two weeks afterwards for six weeks or eight weeks, depending on the plan, to make sure that, again, we're processing and debriefing through this with not only the victims, but the offenders as well. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you. I echo everything. My colleagues have said, a question, and I'm looking at, so first I wanted to say, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Edmondson, about an expedited streamlined process for creating and sustaining and monitoring safety plans, because I think we heard from a lot of our students who have suffered harassment by fellow students, that this has been a continuing issue and challenge for them as they are, you know, whether a safety plan actually gets created or not, and once, if it's created, whether, how, and if it's enforced. So I very much appreciate that piece. And I had a couple of questions on slide 8. The first one is on the key updates, providing an option for reporting if respondent has an IEP. I don't think, maybe this reflects my own ignorance, I'm not sure I know what that means. I mean, I assume whether or not you had an IEP was not an issue with reporting before? Is this that we're using a different method?
So, no, it's just on the form, there was only a, I mean, so there was only a physical space to list that the alleged victim had an IEP, but there was nowhere to mention it if that were the case for the alleged offender or the respondent. So we wanted to make sure we had as much information as we could.
Okay, thank you very much. And then I, could you give just a little bit more background on the last bullet on that slide about the updates requires a more detailed reporting of investigation outcomes? That's also been something we've heard from our, our community and students about making a report and then just not having any idea of what outcomes or what, what was the result of their reporting, except to say, you know, the kind of boilerplate, you know, policy was followed.
So per the state model, specifics about when and where and what steps were taken, maybe five interviews were conducted or five statements were taken by bystanders or witnesses. So that should be included. But one of the things that we've embedded in the adaptive part of it with, with our staff is to ensure that the bullying, the follow-up letter to parents, both, you know, the victim and offender, have all the information in the letter, which is not a requirement of the state model, but we want to make sure that information is in the letter, where it's not confidential.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, well, with that then, I will, I'm just going to read the final whereas and then the resolution. It's whereas Board Policy BFA policy setting permits technical amendments to be adopted immediately by the board upon the recommendation of the Montgomery County Board of Education Policy Management Committee when the proposed amendments are needed to comply with federal, state, or local law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts technical amendments to Board Policy JHF, bullying, harassment, or intimidation to comply with state law. We don't need a second because...
I know. Are there any questions before we vote?
No, I just wanted, you know, I'm on the policy committee, so sometimes this is, I've heard this again, but I just do want to thank you all for your work and say thank you, Dr. Grant, for coming and speaking about our health curriculum. That's all I'm going to say. This is good.
So all in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we're up to item number 11, which is the naming of Gaithasburg Elementary School Number 8. Have a resolution for that.